Welcome everyone. I'm going to call this special council meeting Tuesday, March 6th through order. Are there any late items to add to the agenda? Great. Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second or third?
Second.
All those in favor? Not opposed, motion is carried. We are going into the 2012 budget options and I will turn this over to staff. And thank you very much.
Okay. So I'm going to start off with carrying on from where we left at our last budget meetings, which is the 5.818 percent that you see at the top of the first section.
Excuse me Lori, are you referencing somewhere in the book?
Yeah.
No. You had, our last presentation, budget presentations, we talked about 5.18 percent.
Okay, but we don't have a handout for this.
Last PowerPoint presentation. So it should be in the last section of your binder. You don't, you don't really need it, we're carrying on from there anyway.
Okay.
So we left off at 5.18. Everything we're going to talk about tonight is now, is in the new PowerPoint presentation and in the worksheets that you have and we'll go through those as part of the presentation. I just wanted to tie it into where we left off with our last discussion, which was at 5.18 percent. And then council gave us directions to come back with two additional scenarios, which was approximately 4 percent and approximately 2.5. So I'm going to walk you through how we got to those proposals and where we are with that. So on.
Let's throw a point of order for the chair. For members of the public, how would that work if they want to comment or provide input? How's that?
Counselor, we have an agenda and the public input at the end.
The end, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
We left the last meeting at 5.18 percent so, and we had our direction from council. So what we did as staff was we took the budget that we had at 5.18 percent and closeted ourselves in a room and said, "How are we going to get there?" And the first thing we did is we went back and looked at our supplemental and our core budgets and said, "Is there anything that we can tighten up or is there anything that we missed in there that could help us get to where you're looking for the budget to be?" So in our supplemental, we had to add something back which didn't help us. We had our roof repair at 860 lambs and that we have to do, so we added that back at $6,500. But what we did find for a supplemental reduction was we had an overlap in our finance training budget because one of our staff members was going to retire near the end of this year. She has since decided that she will not be retiring this year, so we took that expense out. We just found that out today, so we made that adjustment. Also, there is an overtime amount in the recreation and sports center budget of $43,000 that Scott indicated we could come out of the budget, so we took that out as well. Under core adjustments, Parks and Rec also went back and went through all of their numbers and decided that they were comfortable increasing revenue by $50,000 and that that would be achievable in 2012, so we've added that back. We had core staffing adjustments. We have Director of Financial Services, which is vacant right now. We had that in the budget at a step three. We have four steps in our salary rates for exempt staff and should we go out advertising higher, we may very well have to pay at the top end of that, so we wanted to have that in the budget just in case. So that was an add back. Then we had a Parks, our Parks manager position, as you know, Andy, is off right now on sick leave, but should he come back this year, we felt comfortable that it wouldn't be prior to the end of June, so we've adjusted that salary. It was in that a full year and we know that that's not going to happen at this point in time, so we adjusted that salary. And also for the Recreation Program Coordinator, that recruitment is in the process of being finalized right now and I think they're moving to interviews very soon, but that hiring won't happen until at least the end of April would be effective, so we've adjusted that salary. It was in the budget a full year, so we were able to do that. So all of these adjustments that we were able to do really didn't affect service levels, didn't affect staffing, it was just going back and reviewing what we had in there and what was realistic. So instead of starting at the 5.18 percent, we're actually starting at 4.42. So I just wanted to, that was just from going through and correcting anything in the current budget.
Thank you.
So 4.42. So from there, we.
Lori, excuse me, just, I'm going to just see if there are any questions just in getting through this, and I just have one and I apologize, probably because I wasn't here last time, but I have a question around the increasing the revenue at Parks and Rec and just in terms of, Scott, if you can give us some sense of how that's going to occur. Because when I was going through the numbers from last year and the projections from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, my recollection is that we didn't meet those targets last year in many of the areas, and so I'd just like to get a sense of what your thoughts are in terms of gaining these revenues.
Absolutely. As we go through the year, our staff are quite diligent of doing quarterly reports, and we've adjusted business units throughout this, throughout the 2011 budget cycle, actual operating cycle, to identify areas where we know we're not going to hit targets because we've shifted, either the market has shifted or our program focus has shifted. So what we've been doing, the $50,000 in increased revenue is not across the board, it's very targeted on specific business units that we either have a very strong hold within the market and we're further exploring, or areas that have extra focus where we've already exceeded revenue projections based on the fact that it's now the second week of March and we've taken revenue for January and February, we've seen where those attendance are going, and we're quite comfortable adjusting those forecasts accordingly. So it's very strategic, it's not just 50,000 on the bottom line, it's hitting specific business units that we know we're going to exceed our current expectations when we set the budget projections into November of 2011.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other questions, Counselor? Seeing none, that's great, thanks.
So in actuality, like I said, rather than the 5.18 percent we thought we were starting at, we're now have a starting point of 4.42. So our first target was approximately 4, and as you can see, we came up with 3.61. So what we did here is we started at the 4.42. Our supplementary reduction that we're recommending is that local grants actually not, we're not reducing local grants, we're just not increasing them over the previous year. We're recommending that the amount for local grants is status quo with 2011. Our core adjustments, which are one-time adjustments, these are, and you'll notice that the total there, 50,000, 60,000, and 70,000 dollars, is $180,000. And the philosophy for this recommendation was that there was an early approval by council of $180,000 for Centennial, which is, obviously, it was voted in favor of, so it's important for the community, but we didn't feel that it was, that we were comfortable reducing service levels or staffing to accommodate that $180,000, but we were comfortable with making some one-time adjustments to contributions that we make into our fund, some of our funds, using some additional casino funds which we have available for this year, and I'll show you the balance in all of those funds at the end, that they still remain healthy even with these recommendations. The contingency account, we consistently put in our budget a $250,000 contingency, and that contingency is specifically for items that come up throughout the year that we haven't budgeted for, and it's basically a discretionary account for council to approve additional expenditures. So rather than carrying it at $250,000, we're comfortable reducing that to $200,000. Historically, the highest amount in the time that I've been here in eight years that we've used of the $250,000 was $117,000. So I'm more than comfortable with the $200,000 in contingency. So we thought that was a reasonable way to get to our target of approximately 4 percent. Is there any questions on that?
Thanks very much.
So our next target was approximately 2.5 percent.
And is that on some of the amount that, or do you want to wait till?
Actually, if we could go back to the previous one. Thank you. So through the chair to Ms. Hurst. So one of the issues that we've had in the past is around our policing costs, so how, just trying to figure out where that might, how this, where this works into this budget. Is it paying what we have been asked to or still reducing to what we had in the past? Could you just, I'm just trying to figure out in my mind how that might work, because that's our largest cost.
The policing costs that are in the budget have been adjusted for the officers that we have direction from Mrs. Hurst's and General's office that we weren't responsible for paying for. That happened, I believe, initially in 2010, so we've adjusted the current request by that. We've also adjusted for our disagreement in how the funding formula is allocated based on the assessed values. We've adjusted using out what we believe is the fair assessment, so those costs are in there but adjusted for those two items.
And that's the only change?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Well, through the chair.
Oh, sorry.
If we could pick up then on the policing cost, should we not be successful in terms of what we believe is the right responsible number? What then is the other number?
What is the amount that we adjusted the policing for? I believe that was in my first presentation, I don't know off the top of my head. Mary, do you recall what the number was for this year?
I, the adjusted number is $389,000, and I believe if we were to adjust it, it's probably going to be over $400,000 if we were to adjust it based on assessments and to add the Community Resource Office.
We're just looking at.
Is it in our binder?
It was in our budget, to increase here for police services budget, justify for two Community Resource Officers salaries from Russia and former based on actual assessments. I don't, the increase in leasing is in the budget, is $389,000, but I believe what you're asking for is what is the portion that we didn't put into the budget?
Yes, yes.
And I don't have that number off the top of my head. I believe it was in the neighborhood of $200,000, but I can double check.
So approximately 1 percent?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Remember, 1 percent is $228,000.
$228,000.
$228,000 based on the 2011 act.
But that is a guesstimate, but I will firm that number.
So that leads me into one further question, not having been present, and again, I apologize. Has council accepted and approved at this point the police budget as presented, or this is just now still within discussion?
Police budget is within our budget and gets approved at the same time our budget gets approved.
Yes, and so if we want to have discussions about how we make changes to that, tonight is the night to do that?
Yes. When we go through the supplemental, those amounts, we can discuss those amounts.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to highlight it, just make sure we didn't lose it.
And any further questions? Okay. So our next scenario that council gave us direction was approximately 2.5 percent, and as you can see, we've come in at 2.56 percent. What we did here to bring this down from 3.61 to 2.56 was, we will go through this in detail later, but we have staffing or supplemental staffing requests in the budget this year amounting to $80,000. We are recommending that under the 2.56 scenario, that those staffing requests are not approved. And then we have three public works projects that would not happen under this scenario. We would not do a road condition evaluation, we'd not have a library for engineering reports, and we would not have additional storage for plants. And in addition to that, so I just, I'll go back to the staffing request. I think what I need to say here is that if those staffing requests, and we'll go into this further later on, are not approved, then we will have a really hard time meeting council's strategic priorities, because those staffing requests are really tied to the direction that council's given us under strategic priorities. The other item that we put in here was an appropriation of 2011 surplus. The reason we didn't include this in the first scenario or the second scenario is because we are not 100% sure what the surplus for 2011 will be. So we put this in, I put this in only because, again, historically, we have had a surplus of $100,000 plus in the years that I've been here. But we haven't finished our due end yet. Our audit isn't complete and won't be complete until the end of March, beginning of April, so we don't have, I don't have 100% confidence in the surplus number. So the 2.56 percent scenario is not the one that staff is recommending. We would recommend the 3.61 percent tax increase. Having said that, we were sitting and discussing, looking at the 3.61 percent scenario and knowing that obviously council would want to get lower than that if possible, and then we're looking at the 2.56 percent tax increase and thinking, you know, what could we do to further decrease the 3.61, which, a 3.61 percent tax increase is what staff would recommend because it allows us to do all the projects that we have in the budget, it allows us not to decrease service levels or staffing levels, and it still keeps us relatively financially healthy. But if I take, if we take a combination of the 2.56 percent and the 3.61, we thought there is a relative degree of confidence with the $100,000 surplus, and if staff were making a recommendation, this is the recommendation that we would be making, which is that the 3.61, that the tax increase or the tax rates be developed based on the 3.61 percent, but as we get closer to the end of March, if we confirm up the surplus numbers, we bring that surplus into 2012 to decrease the 3.61 as much as possible. If we, if we had the $100,000 surplus, that would produce up to a 3.17 percent tax increase.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Morrison?
Just in clarification on the staffing levels, the approximately $80,000, is that proposing an increase of hours of current staff, or is that proposing hiring of brand-new staff? Or a combination of?
All of the above.
Oh, okay. That's.
We have an actual separate worksheet for that, we'll go through it in detail, line by line.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. If you can go back to the last slide, please. So when we're looking at supplemental reductions, there are a number of supplemental items, and so staff have chosen these, but it's my understanding that under public works, we have $70,000 supplemental for speed hubs, for example. So in terms of what council is looking at, although these are the choices that staff have made, council can look through and choose which of the supplemental items they may want to use to reduce those amounts. It's really up to council at this point to make decisions strategically, short-term, long-term, within those supplementals and how we go forward.
Absolutely.
So there's, there is room to maneuver different than the scenarios presented, I guess is what I wanted to make sure that we're aware of.
These are simply staff's recommendation based on the direction that council gave us.
Yeah.
But then on top of this, you're absolutely right, when we go through the supplemental and capital, if you add things, add projects or items back in, it will increase these, and if you delete or decrease items, it will decrease these tax increases.
Well.
And it's at your discretion as we go through the worksheet.
Yes, but just for example, and I use the speed bumps because I know the number, are we going to go through these supplementals individually so that we have that, okay? So because, you know, the road condition evaluation to, from discussion, I understand, is a proactive way of moving forward in terms of resolving long-term infrastructure problems. And so if I'm looking at that versus speed hubs, I can switch one in for the other, then we save $20,000 extra dollars there, and that helps to juggle this around, right? So it's not that I'm adding more on, therefore reducing, I can mix and match, or we can as a group.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks. Counselor Hennelby.
Thank you. Through the chair to Ms. Hurst. I wondered if you could give us a general understanding of how utilities have changed? So we know that in our own homes, the cost of oil and gasoline for our vehicles and electricity and so on has increased, and I wonder how that's affected the municipality?
So you're talking about what we've discussed at the last meeting with other economic indicators of, or.
You could do it in the context of economic indicators, yes.
Right.
But I'm just thinking that I know that there has to be some impacts to the municipal budget as well as our own home budget, so I was curious as to what those might be, if we had a chance to actually analyze those.
We did actually look at those, I looked at, I looked at both of those. I looked at some other economic indicators and did some research. I actually didn't hand it out yet, but there was also a request at the last budget meeting to do, to provide a spreadsheet, although the information is a bit dated on population versus costs of different services, and I've done that. We had a, we had a discussion at the staff level in regard to utilities and fuels and those sorts of things, and you guys can jump in anytime, but our initial discussion was that we didn't see a large increase in any of those areas in our municipal budget. So it wasn't significant enough to pull it out and examine it, we didn't, we didn't have a lot of that. As you know, in the rec center and the sports center, there was a lot of work done to take advantage of energy savings and those sorts of things, so I think we're seeing the results of that.
Thank you. Counselor Morrison?
If we could just go back to the contingency fund issue?
Oh, sure.
$250,000 and then having that.
Right.
Increase significantly, and as a counsel, or as a counselor, I sort of see contingency funds as our friend, and I get very nervous when we start talking about reducing them, and I do, I understand your point based on past measurements or past practices that it hasn't really been needed. I always get nervous though that the Murphy's Law rule would be the year that you do reduce it significantly is the year that somehow you definitely needed that fund, and that's why it's there, just because it's so unpredictable, and even looking at surplus not being certain yet, $100,000. And I wonder, is there a best practice rule for municipal budgets that a contingency fund should be a set percentage, or is it? And I know there's other municipalities within the same region that have gotten themselves into a lot of trouble, you know, without naming municipalities, and this community's been known quite, to have quite a good reputation in planning for a rainy day type situation. Yeah.
There was a multitude of questions in there, so I'll try to address them all.
Yeah. What's the rule on?
There is no rule on a contingency fund. What there is is a rule on your overall budget, which is you have, in combination with contingency, you have surplus contingency and reserve funds that are available to you in the amount of, I believe, Mary, it's 1 percent of your, of your overall budget. And we have that ruling from, and we got that advice from KPMG a couple of years ago. With our, with your ability to access reserve funds and to access any surplus and to access your contingency, we are well above that percentage. Reducing your contingency in your budget doesn't mean that you still don't have access to those funds, it just means having to come back to council and do a resolution rather than it being available as part of the budget.
Thank you. Counselor Hodgson?
Thank you, through the chair. Question around, and just exploring opportunity, we, council, supported a request from the Centennial Committee, approximately $180,000.
Right.
Now, that was the worst-case scenario. They were still very active in seeking grant monies and other opportunities, sponsorships, et cetera, so that that amount may in fact be significantly decreased. Is there any update on that at this point, any feedback, or any of the grants been approved that we know of, or are we still at the place where we're waiting to hear?
You're looking to me to answer that?
Well, if anybody has any information, are we still at that raw number of 182?
We're still at the raw number of 182 that I'm aware of, and I'm, I am by no means up to date, except that I had a meeting today that suggested that that number will change. That's all I can say in terms of, it's not, it's not signed and on the line.
There is an opportunity there, and it was based on the presentation where the committee felt very positive that that number would not be necessary. So just, that'll impact on the bottom line at the end of the day in a good way.
The one thing that I have to say that our staff do well is they budget very conservatively, which is why we are in the great state that we are in with all the variables that we have, including PILTA, et cetera. And so we never, we never count our eggs until they're, until they're actually in the basket. And so, yes, we can say that, but what we, you know, I think what staff are saying is, you know, with all that we've got right now, this is what we're getting. Centennial Committee, I know, is very hopeful of receiving funds, and as I say, I got a positive indication today.
And again, just a supplemental, in terms of what I'm thinking about is that if there were some projects or positions that, you know, we weren't able to support at this time, does not mean in fact that in a couple of months from now, if the financial picture was to change, that we could come back as a council and say, "Yeah, you know that position that you need? We're now able to move forward." Anyway, it was just, I think, a positive thing that is potential, and I understand it's simply potential.
Do you want to comment to that?
Yeah, a couple of comments. So on the issue of being conservative, accountants are notoriously conservative, and that's what this recommendation incorporates. Pulling or reducing these other one-time items by the exact amount of the Centennial is a very conservative budget. And as you say, if the Centennial budget turns out to not be a net cost of $180,000, you could, for instance, reduce the amount of casino funds that you bring into the budget, or you could redo, or you could increase the amount of money that you put into your capital projects reserve fund. Any of these three numbers that amounts to $180,000 could be adjusted to reflect whatever cost ends up being incurred by Centennial.
Thank you.
Counselor Hennelby?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to Mr. Miller. I wondered if you could provide some background for us regarding the sewage, not sewage treatment, but our sewer pipes within the municipality and how the, what the term is now, how the upgrades to those, or improving the condition of those sewer pipes is coming along and how this is reflected into our current budget as we, as we see it here at 3.61.
Your worship to the counselor. As you know, we undertook a program of relining in the early 2000s where, if I remember correctly, approximately half of our pipes could be lined. Since that time, we have not counted the lines. So to tell you what the condition is, I really can't tell you, although I can probably tell you, we probably haven't experienced any breaks on those lines yet, but to what the condition of the main lines are, I will be quoting a number from 2000, which has been changed through the line. As we move into future budget years, I will be looking to institute a program on a probably a 10-year cycle to camera our. a 10-year cycle to camera our lines at least every once 10 years to give us a snapshot of what the system looks like.
Thank you. And in terms of the the crossing of the lines between sewer and stormwater and that work, could you comment on that?
That is an ongoing program. There is a budget request in this year's budget as well, which we will come across later as we go through. I believe it's in the capital project, in the capital side rather than the supplementary. So you will be seeing it come up again.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to roll.
Okay, so I actually Jeff just reminded me of a clarification that I should make too, and I know you were only using the speed hubs as an example.
Uh-huh.
But just so everybody's under the same understanding, the 70,000 dollars for speed hubs is in the budget, but it's not in supplemental, it's in capital. It does not have a tax impact. We have funded it from the capital projects reserve fund. So I just wanted, so you can trade out of other things for the 50,000, but the 70,000 wouldn't result in any impact to the tax increases that I've shown here.
Thank you. It's listed under supplemental.
It's under supplemental capital.
Oh, under capital.
Under capital.
Thank you very much.
And funded from a reserve fund. So. Pardon me.
Counselor.
And this question, maybe it's better to come in later, but I'm picking up on the traffic plumbing issue. As it was suggested, we heard loud and clear last night from residents, it's not necessarily speed tables or speed hubs that are required. And I'm wondering if public works engineering has had a chance to consider options to that or is that something that will be considered going forward?
Your worship to the counselor, I think that's where I'm going to look at direction from council. If you deny the speed hubs to the capital project reserve and give direction that you would want to undertake that work, I would come back with you for a cost if I have to go external or if I could do it internally and let you know what the associated cost would be and then get permission to move forward.
So if I could just follow up on that. I think what the question is, is are there options to speed tables? Also, is there something else where that 70,000 could be spent to achieve the desired outcome, which is to eliminate speeding?
Your worship to the counselor, there probably are other options. What they are, I couldn't tell you right off the bat without further research.
Is that something that will be undertaken, that research, so it's not just simply speed tables, but there is another opportunity? I'm just wondering if that's within.
I would say that would be a direction the council would give me to what direction you want to take that project.
Thank you.
So just in terms of clarifying, right now, it's currently in the budget at 70,000, which we have given staff indication that the report that was presented and what the options were, we wanted to put into this budget. If we do not approve this budget with that amount, then we can provide the direction for the staff to go back and look at alternative options.
Well, I think what I'm asking is, I support funding to address the speeding issue with all this right now program.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that what we do is the best solution. So it may be we need to tell, ask staff for an option within the dollar amount that may not necessarily require speed tables and yet our objective of eliminating speeding would be accomplished.
Yes, and I guess what I'm trying to do is clarify that right now we're within budget discussions. We haven't given staff that direction, but that's an alternative. Right now, within the budget, what we're doing is approving and moving forward with whatever we've got for that funding and how it's been presented. We can change that direction later. Am I correct?
When we go through the capital budget or the capital request line by line, when we get to that item, you can give that direction to staff and we'll follow through on that.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm not skipping, I've done those ones. So in all of the scenarios that I've given, we have not altered the capital projects. So under 4.42, 3.61, and 2.56, the capital requests and the recommendations from staff remain the same. All of these capital projects, what I've done is I've put all the total amounts and we'll go through these, these are on your worksheets. All of these capital projects will are contained in this budget and in under all three tax increase scenarios. So as you can see, we have 7.3 million dollars in capital projects that are being funded from these different reserve funds, grants, community works fund, casino, and prior year projects that were carried forward that were approved for funding last year that didn't get completed, but we brought them forward to this year. In addition to that, we actually have in this budget a total of seven point, almost 7.6 million dollars in capital projects that we would be completing this year. Under each of those tax increase scenarios, even under the 2.56% scenario, we would still be doing these capital projects.
Councilor Hennelby. Thank you. Through the chair, Ms. Hurst. So could you please confirm that the amount that would be going into the capital funds as replacement, it is also included in our budgets?
Senior core budget.
Thank you.
You're talking about the transfer they put in there for retired debt payments, the amount that we contribute to the capital project reserve fund?
Yes.
Yes, and that's taken into account in the final balances that I'll be showing you shortly.
But that, but it hasn't altered those?
No. Other than the one under under scenario of 3.61, we were reducing that contribution by 60,000 dollars. That is the only adjustment to that amount.
And that's that's also reflected in 2.56, though?
Yes, yes, yes. So 7.5 million dollars in capital projects in the 2012 budget. Here are our projected reserve funded account balances. I've highlighted 2012, these are the projected balances that would be that are projected to be there December 31, 2012, after we complete all the projects requested under budget. So we have a total, we have a total of 2.6 million dollars from our statutory reserve funds and then additional monies left in casino revenue and community work funding. And that takes into account completing the 7.5 million dollars with the capital projects and our core budgets and supplemental requests. Any questions on those?
Casino revenue, we have traditionally slotted that toward bringing down the debt on the recreation center.
We still do.
So this is over and above that?
Yes.
Thank you.
And it's over and above bringing an additional 70,000 dollars in to help us get to the 3.61% tax increase and funding a couple of other projects as well.
Thank you. And do we traditionally have money left over in the casino fund?
Yes.
At about this level?
About this level.
Thank you.
So you can't see my, the colors very well on the overhead, but I tried to color code this page to match your worksheets. What we've done is the 4.42% tax increase is done in black lettering on your worksheets. Anything that we've taken out of the supplemental requests or the capital requests is done in red on your on your worksheets and then anything that we took out under the 2.56% tax increase is done in blue on your worksheets and those are all totaled on your worksheets as we go through. So it'll show you on the worksheets. If it's in black and recommended by staff, then it's included in the 4.42%. If it's, if there's something in red subtracting, it means it comes out under the 3.61 and if it's in blue, it comes out under the 3.61 and the 2.56.
Councilor Hodgson.
Through the chair. Question for staff. Very general question, but I'm hoping it helps us over the long term. So we've just been through a significant strategic planning process and we've identified the priorities and I'm wanting to ensure that whichever option we choose, built into the option is support for those strategic priorities. By way of example, when we talk about economic development and I know Mr. Brown is on side and it will be out and about generating some significant revenues through economic development, I'm sure it's built into your performance contract. So.
That's on the strategic plan, it's called performance measurement, it's not that I have to develop that yet, but I'll make sure it's included on Mr. Brown's.
Yeah, that and controlling the deer. So. So if you understand what I'm looking for is just to make sure that in fact we are coordinated and connected back to our strategic priorities within the options presented. And I know I can't get into detail, but generally.
Generally, the strategic priorities are covered under the 4.42 and 3.61. The strategic priorities will be partially covered under the 2.56, but not not completely covered. We need those additional staffing requests in order to provide that support to get there. So.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
So I'm going to leave that last, the last slide up on the screen. As you can see, under 4.42% total supplemental supplemental operating requests are 1,044,000. That ties into the spreadsheets, the worksheets that you have, the final numbers at the end. The supplemental staffing, there's another worksheet with the 80,000 dollars detailed on it and there's supplemental capital. Out of the capital, only 66,490 is coming from operating, the rest is coming from reserve funds, grants, donations, other funding sources that don't impact the tax increase. As you can see, under the 3.61%, we've reduced supplemental operating requests very slightly down to 1,039, as you recall on the summary sheets, we offset that and managed to get that tax reduction, the one-time reductions in other areas than supplemental requests. And under 2.56, the supplemental requests are 979,000 and the capital is 66,490. And so all of these numbers tie into those worksheets that you have and what we will do now is now that you've been given the overview of where we're at and what the staff recommendation was, we would like to start with the supplemental requests and that's the one that has, it's the, I think, the largest, the one that starts general government legislative membership fees, that's that's the spreadsheet that we'd like to start. Yeah, we've got, like to start with that spreadsheet. And what we'll do is each of the directors or managers responsible for each of those sections will give you a general overview. You can ask questions and have discussion as we go through. If you want to flag, I'm just going from the way we've done this in previous years, if you want to flag something for discussion to come back to it later, we can do that. Just ask us and we'll flag it as staff and we'll we'll bring it up to you at the end. If you want to make, give directions to staff as soon as you go over the items, you can do that. But we'll go through all of this. I don't know how long it will it will take tonight. We may only get through the supplemental, we may get through all of it tonight. I don't know, it depends on how the discussion goes.
Thank you. I certainly would prefer that we, as we go through it, we identify these things. What I find is when you get to the end of a list, you forget some things. That's how I'm going to approach it.
Okay, so if council's okay with that process, we will have each of the people responsible for these areas go through them in as a general overview.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So we'll start with Anya for legislative services.
Okay, so there are four items included in this. The first two are membership fees. Tourism Victoria was previously, it's not a new amount, it's just moving it over here. It used to be covered as a local grant and it was felt that it's more appropriate as a membership fee, so it's just transferred from one department to another. The amount is the same, I believe. Treaty Advisory Committee, there is a core amount that we have been paying each year and it's thought that this needs to be increased by the amount of 3,500 dollars this year. So that brings the total budget amount for that item to 5,000 dollars and that was, I believe, previously brought to council and.
The meeting expenses, this includes things like the orientation, council orientation sessions where we had to bring in a facilitator, the strategic planning sessions, meal expenses for meetings we had not budgeted sufficiently in the past and it's thought that we needed to increase this to cover all of those meeting expenses. And the council calendar and email system has a monthly charge included in maintaining that that system online for council. So this is the monthly charge over the year, which is an increase from last year. Those are the ones that are covered in the council legislative budget.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Hennelby.
Thank you. My memory is failing me here and so I'm just wanting some clarification. So for Tourism Victoria, my recollection with the previous local grants was that it was an amount that was identified as what we felt that we could afford within our local grants budget, but the membership fee was actually higher. So I wondered if you could just clarify that it is the membership fee that had been requested and not just the amount that had been pulled out of local grants?
This is a combination vote. This is the membership fees.
Okay, so as Tourism Victoria invoices, this is what they've requested as a membership fee?
This is what they've requested.
Thank you.
To follow on that, if we've put it in this part of the budget, have we reduced the local grants in a fashion?
No, we haven't because the local grants is done by an amount, not but not specific to grants. The local grants is allocated an amount and then how they distribute it is up to them, so we didn't reduce it by that amount.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thanks very much.
The next section is the administration. The amounts that are.
Excuse me, Anya.
Sorry, Councilor Hennelby. Questions tonight? I'm wondering whether it would be an important item for council to actually review the use of the calendar and email system to know that it's doing what we wanted it to do? Is that going to happen or is this going to be an anecdotal? It seemed to me it would be important for us to review that, see if we wanted any improvements or if it's doing what we want it to do.
I'm not sure how the question fits into the budget amount, I guess is where. Can you clarify?
I guess my question is, you know, do we really need to spend the money still or not? And so if we're all happy with it and we don't want to see any changes, then that would be fine. But if we did want to see some changes, we wanted something more or less or whatever, then that might change the budget.
Okay. So staff, can you clarify what the 1,500 dollar cost is?
1,500 dollars is the annual annualized cost of the internet fees to keep that supported for the year. I would expect that we would have ongoing discussion about whether that system is working or not and we would especially have it when we do our quarterly. And, and we would especially have it when we do our quarterly reports to council. I think that would be the appropriate place to have those. And if there's improvements that need to be made, I, I would expect, this is, $1,500 is a small cost for this. The large cost was when we implemented it last year. I would hope that we wouldn't do away with the system, but if there was improvements that were needed, that we would look at making those. And we can certainly have those discussions. We should have those discussions because it is a new system, so we want to have that dialogue on whether it's, it's working well or can be improved. I, I imagine our, our, I, it's my opinion that there are parts of that system that we aren't utilizing at this point because we're just getting up and running on it.
Thank you. Counselor Hodgins?
Thank you, through the chair. To pick up on the conversation, I for one am extremely pleased with the system. I find it very effective, very useful, great communications tool. And if there are some options to enhance our use of the tool or the tool itself, I'm all in favor. I think communications is extremely important and the system from my perspective is doing the job. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and I'll just add my two cents. I think this, it's too young to really know and $1,500 is $1,500. So I think in support of it, we analyze it as we go forward as staff suggested. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to administration, there are five items here. The first one is just increasing the amount for overtime for staff. We do have several staff members that have to attend evening council or committee meetings for taking staff days on. We haven't been budgeting sufficiently for overtime and so this is an increase to the budget. Likewise, the pay for acting CEO. I don't know if you wanted to say anything else about that, Lori?
They, they actually expect to get paid when I'm not here to do my job.
Counselor Shinby, you have a question?
Yes, Your Worship, for you to staff. A little concerned about that $7,000 for acting pay. I just, given what the actual salaries are, I find it a little hard to see paying extra money. I'm just having some difficulty with that. Thank you.
Counselor Morrison?
Just following up. Is that discretionary amount of money? Is that something that we are contractually obligated to do with each of the individual contracts of our directors? I kind of share the view that, you know, part of being a director and part of being a management is that part of your overall pay is for certain times of the year, for very temporary periods, you would act in a more senior capacity, but without, you know, the compensation that goes along with it because you're not the permanent person responsible. The buck doesn't stop with you permanently. You're just doing it on a substitutional basis. And the reason why you have higher pay for the higher position is because that CEO position is continuously responsible for everything, not just on a temporary basis. But, sorry, I just, I'll go straight to my, back to my question. Is it, is it something we have in discretionary control?
We have exempt officers and employees by law and policy that stipulates that when someone's acting in a higher position, they get a 5% increase in their pay for doing that, those acting duties.
But just sort of go back to my question, that's not in their contract, it's a bylaw? Is that right?
It's, it's by law and a policy.
And not in the contract?
Right.
Individual contract?
Right.
So if council took this $7,000 out, we just have to basically change that bylaw?
Right.
Counselor Hodgins?
Thank you, through the chair. I support the need for appropriate compensation for the responsibilities that one assumes. I'm wondering within that bylaw, and I play out into a detailed discussion this evening, but within that bylaw, is that for an identified time? For example, you know, if you're away for a day and someone's acting or if you're in fact on vacation for a week, is there any rules around that?
It's for a week in a month.
Thank you.
Counselor Morrison?
Just to draw a comparison here, each one of the council members does acting mayor duties two months of the year. Their pay does not change and that was two months. So, you know, just in terms of consistency. And I want to be very clear that we have very good directors, excellent directors. And as Counselor Shinby said, we do pay them decent salaries for the jobs that they do. I see part of that job also being a temporary CEO as required, but just like we'd be temporary mayors as required without compensation.
Counselor, that is within council's discretion to put that forward as well within that policy? So there, can you perhaps give us a bit more background as to why this is increased? Is it because of the increase that council passed in the last little while that has increased this amount?
It's mostly to do with the change that was approved by council for 2011 and then it was anticipated for 2000, other will be for 2000 also.
Yeah, so it's, it's within the rules that we, or the policies we've passed already. Thank you. Okay. Any further questions on that? Being done, we'll move on.
Okay, the next item is for the Breakfast Management Program, which has been identified as one of council's strategic priorities. So this allows us to have a bit of consulting, some upgrades to our software possibly and purchasing some materials to try to get that program started. So it's, it's just a start of that program. We're not quite clear on the total extent of what is required, but that'll get us started for this year at least. The next two items are for Communications Coordinator. One is Social Media Staff Training, which again is important these days to bring staff up to speed on that. And Computer Software for Communications as well has been identified as being required in order to, to make sure that we have up to date communications available to us.
Questions, counsel? Counselor Hunderby and then Counselor Hodgins.
Thank you, Chair. And the question is, are these all supplemental items that are, will roll over into core or are these one-time supplemental requests?
If, if the request is a core, you'll see it shown repeated in the middle column. If it's not repeated in the middle column, it's a one-time request.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you. Can I have Counselor Hodgins?
Thank you, through the chair. My question, I'm assuming comes under this area of responsibility. And we've talked about the need to enhance or improve communications within this room proper. So communications for mayor and council, communications for the public as they address mayor and council, et cetera. And is that something that would need to be added again or is that being contemplated overall in the, in the budget for 2012?
Communications in the sense that you're talking with improvements to this room would be under capital rather than supplemental budget. I'm not sure if they're there, but I can, I'll, yeah, I think there was something under the IT section for do upgrade, yeah, upgrade council chambers, audiovisual equipment and upgrades to the council chamber. So that's under capital budget.
Thank you.
Counselor Morrison?
We could just go to the, sorry, the social media line item, $1,700. That's, just to look for some consistency. I know with Parks and Recreation, we had a very successful launch of social media and I'm wondering, did they spend $1,700 training to do that? That might be more appropriate question for the director of Parks and Rec.
This is the amount that I guess Richie Morrison has tracked into opportunities out there. This is the amount that he has told me that the training course would require for, the one that he is interested in taking.
Fair enough. But I guess what I'm getting at is I know organizations, including perhaps Parks and Rec within our own organization, have managed to be very successful very quickly with social media. And it's not, the wonders of social media is it doesn't really require a lot of professional training. It certainly is, it does require that if you want to take it to a different level, but, but just to implement it, it's, you know, young children are doing it every day. So it's not a difficult, complex training requirement to start a Twitter account or maintain a Twitter account or a Facebook page. So I'm just, what I'm trying to be very cautious here, if we're going to approve $1,700 and all we're going to get out of it is something we can learn, our staff to learn quite quickly on their own, just by playing around with social media. Just putting that cautionary note out there. And as I say, I use the example of Parks and Rec. As far as I know, they don't have any dedicated social media coordinators trained or whatever in social media. They just did it and they did a great job of, fantastic job.
I have to say, I attended social media camp with our Parks and Rec staff, so I know that we've spent money on their training.
That was my question.
Now, any further questions in this area? Counselor Shinby, did you have something further?
Thank you, Your Worship. With reference back to the pay for the acting CEO, I would like to propose, or I'm not sure of the procedure, motion that at the moment that be removed from the budget pending review of the current bylaw that we have out on that. I'm not sure of the procedure.
I think at this point, what I would suggest is that we flag it to, to come back to within the mix of everything, unless you're really feeling strongly about at this time, it may not be able to come back into the budget in the timeframe that we need to review that bylaw. That would be my worry. And if it's required after we review that, then we might be in trouble. So I would suggest that we flag it at this point and we can always revisit again, but even to have a look at the bylaw might be the best way to start as opposed to taking it out completely before and not have the option. Does that make sense, what I've said?
I can agree with that, Your Worship. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll add a flag beside that so that council can review that bylaw and have an understanding of it. Counselor, we're kind of...
Thank you, Goodness. Through staff, social media staff training, $1,700, is that from courses that Richie's going to attend outside of his hours of work?
Yes.
Okay, so that's programs that we're going to buy for him to upgrade. Is that correct?
No, computer software for communications is software that we're going to buy. Training is simply done, training session.
Yeah. Okay.
And I noticed he didn't even put his camera in there that he desperately needs. Having a big bad conversation. Well done, Richie, for nerving it up. I think we're, everybody okay now on this one? Okay, so we'll move on to finance.
Okay, so finances, there's not too much here. The overlap to payroll has since been not recommended by staff. That retirement will not be happening. Legal services for appeal to appeal. We have a appeal to appeal from previous, previous year that's outstanding. We're also going to be making a second appeal to appeal for 2011. And we're just in the process of filing that now. We are going to have legal fees associated with that. So we need to put that in the budget. Staff training, courses in accordance with education policy. We do have an education policy that if a staff member's are taking courses that are relevant to their work, that we, we pay a certain percentage of that. We have a couple of members of the finance department who are taking their CGA courses and such, so we've, they've put in requests for that, that we can put in the budget.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Grants to organizations, intermunicipal social services submit their requests each year. There's an increase requested for that. And local grants of 3644, that is the, those are the increases that we don't, aren't recommending under the 3.61 percent tax increase, the 4,248, you'll see in the red, we've taken that out under that scenario. It is included in the 4.42 percent tax increase. And so that's just the increase in accordance, the 3644 is the increase in accordance with our policy, which is to increase local grants each year by the previous year's average tax increase.
Thank you. Counselor, bring...
So the grants for, through you to staff, so the grants for intermunicipal social services, so we have a choice as to how much we pay for those? I kind of thought they were man, not mandated, but...
No, no, they're not actually. They come to the local grant committee in the same as all the other local grants. I think there's been a sense that they're, they're less flexible than others because they're for different type organizations. Yeah.
So there is some more flexibility in there than...
There is flexibility. You don't have to approve the increases when it comes to the local grant.
Now, just, it, it says that it's not recommended by staff.
We're, yeah, we're recommending that we don't do increases to either of those.
Okay, so that's what that, just double check.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. To follow on with that, and I'll come to you, Counselor Hunderby. In the discussions that we have had over the last year, when we've gone out to the public and, and asked them to give us their thoughts around, you know, tax increases versus services and, and those sorts of discussions, local grants comes up time and time again in terms of whether that is an area we should be looking at in terms of, you know, do we, do we continue to fund to the level that we are doing? And certainly, from, from what we heard, I, I feel that that is an area that I would like to look at in terms of recognizing the hardship of reducing those. I think that clearly we have to look at all areas and certainly I support not increasing it, but I also see that there's an opportunity to decrease it. We've, we've moved something that, that's worth $2,100. I, I think that this is a place that I'd like to review. Counselor Hunderby?
Thank you. So just in response to those comments, I certainly would agree that we should be reconsidering those. Certainly in the light of the reduction and moving membership fees over to legislative as opposed to local grants. I just wanted to understand with the grants, intermunicipal social services, so through the chair to Ms. Hurst, so does this include, or does that item include the housing amount that we've been providing every year, something like $40,000?
That does not include that.
Okay, so where, where would, is it, it's not then on supplemental?
No.
It's still under core and there's been no change?
It's under core, there's been no change.
Thank you.
So counsel, are you in agreement to flag this for further discussion? What is the total amount in the local grants? That we allocate?
I think it's, I think it was around $70,000.
Is it around $100,000?
It is, it's over 100. And last year's budget was, last year's total budget was $114,000.
That had something of a carryover though, so I don't believe that that's, that was a one-shot. Wasn't there something about that? Anyways, I'll leave that to staff, but to, to give counsel the, the general idea, it's around $100,000 or more. So if we can flag that for further discussion. Thank you. Anything further on this section, counsel? I think we can move on.
The next four headings, we'll follow the jurisdiction. Natural gas from municipal hall is an estimate from our friends at Fortis for what it's going to cost to heat the building. We're still going to look for ways to cut that down, but we're running pretty game as it is, so I thought it would be best that we put money in at this time. as it is, so I thought it would be best that we put money in at this time. The replacing the water here is for both 860 Lamson and 398 Fraser, they're pretty self-explanatory. They're basically at the end of their life and maybe be replaced. The one for 398 Fraser is offset from the Eva Chase Reserve Fund, so that is a wash. The roof on 860 Lamson is actually a late item that thanks to the windstorm we had just a week ago, we were trying to stretch out the replacement of that roof until next year. So we would, when we did both buildings roof replacement, we could get some economies of scale. Unfortunately, the wind did not want to go along with that plan and there's been a fair amount of damage to that roof. And having expected it, it needs to be replaced this year, otherwise we could face structural damage if we have a wet season.
Thank you.
Did that wind come from Victoria? Did we charge them?
Yeah.
Well, I think they gave you call, but they don't have that noise, so they're going to help us and...
You asked for a suit.
For the benefit of all, which is our building, an 860 Lamson?
It's the one just on the corner of Lamson and Transfer Street. We own two properties in that area that were bought in anticipation of straightening out that, for lack of a better term, dog was late, so larger trucks wouldn't be able to access the tilton that way. And at this time, we haven't moved forward with that project yet.
And do we have that house rented? Does it realize revenue?
It is rented, and there is a revenue stream from it.
Thank you. And is that a way to recover this roof repair in any way?
No, not at this time. The revenue, the rent we do get from it is set at a reasonable level, is based on the rental market, and as the owners of the home, this would be our responsibility.
Absolutely. Just, just to follow up, are we at market value for that rent?
Last time I checked, I believe we were in the ballpark. There might be a touch low, but not significant.
Thank you. Will our appraised value go up if we put any roof on? Am I nickel and diming you? Please go on.
That's it for my section.
So we're on to the next page. Very short section on police advisory panel. Supplemental budget requests here. Legal services of $15,000 and consulting services of $85,000, and that's continuing with the availability of the request for the local courses.
Counselor Shinbin.
Well, thank you, your worship, to you to staff. Do you anticipate we will need in the second year of this, for the consulting and all that, that we're going to need all of that, or is this just to be on the safe side?
I believe we're going to need all of this. $85,000 is an actual estimate that came from the consulting that these board hired out in the first part of the year, so I think it's all the number. As long as the process goes forward, then we're going to need the budget.
Any further questions? Counselor Braden.
And because it's only under budget request, this is just one more year, because we're really not sure what will happen after this year.
I, this is just for this year, and we didn't want to put it in as an annual forecast because it shouldn't be.
Thank you. Counselor Hodgins.
So, challenge in this area, and I understand in detail, there's a lot of information, financial information, so at this point, would it be safe to say if Minister Justice was to make a decision, we would, it would be to our benefit financially? Understanding again, it's that process whereby our future is within the hands of the province, and the longer that goes, our costs are therefore in place. So I understand the need to budget for this, it's just frustrating when another level of government is driving the bus and we're just the law for the ride. The question so much is new wine, so thank you.
Recognize your frustration. I think though, that in all fairness, there is budgeting within here with a process that needs to occur as we go forward. And as staff have said, you know, it is dependent on the decision, but we have set the direction and in anticipation of going in that direction, it is realistic for the, for us to do that. Recognize your frustration, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, we'll move on.
My first item tonight, Mary Ann Dawson, is an item that's needed to support our iPad tablet system, and this is an alternative to our previous mobile data terminal. And the advantage of the iPad is it does a much better job of supporting firefighters on the scene or during their inspections. And also with this system, it's only a one-time request, hence not tied to San Fire Dispatch, which would have required a $20,000 a year payment for that, for providing that support through mobile data terminal. That's why it's only a one-time request, and it's for the server, for this need for that piece of equipment.
Thank you.
The next item is in regards to succession planning for exempt staff training and for exempt staff training.
Oh, we can't hear you, chief.
Just take a top speed today.
Dave, can you hold it just till he's gone through the section? Would be all right, sorry, Counsel Hodges.
Thank you, Counselor.
My next item is in regards to succession planning and exempt staff training. And with the announcement of Deputy Anderson's retirement this October, we are going to need to go to a system of, a process of advertising for that position, whether or not we're successful from hiring from within or without, there's still going to be a cost associated with that process for advertising. And also, there'll probably be a one-month salary during the mentoring process of that appointment. So that's a budget request, and it's also my request that we increase core by $5,000 because administrative replacement's an ongoing issue with staff. The next item, TOIL payouts. TOIL stands for time off in lieu of overtime. And that, those amounts are incurred when firefighters work in fashion other than emergency call-out overtime, for instance of training, attending certain seminars or, for instance, if an officer was to attend a pre-planning seminar or something, then they do not incur overtime, they incur TOIL. However, I've asked for an $11,000 budget request, and that to be included in core, so annually, rather than having a unfunded liability at the end of somebody's career, they're paid out for that TOIL that's accumulated that year, and it's paid out at that rate of pay rather than carrying it forward for four or five years and paying them out when they retire at a larger amount. The next item, FDIC, that stands for Fire Department Instructors Conference. And I'm requesting $3,000 or $2,950 to send two firefighters to that, that's to cover travel and accommodation. These are two members that do not incur overtime, they're exempt staff, so, and exempt staff do not incur TOIL either. There will be some acting pay to cover off those officers while they are in attendance at that conference, but there's great value in the FDIC conference. That's where the members receive the instruction and the training that they can bring back to the rest of the firefighters throughout the year. And the Unit 701 Fleet cost, that's the new command vehicle, and those are the costs for maintenance for that vehicle for the year.
Thank you. Counselor Hodgins.
Thank you, through the chair. Just wanted to pick up on the use of the iPad tablets, and I've heard from the staff, chief, that they're very much impressed and find these pieces of equipment to be extremely useful as a part of routine duties and especially during emergency situations. So kudos to yourself and the staff for taking on this technology and making such good use of it, so.
Thank you, Counselor.
Further questions? Counselor Shinbin.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to the fire chief. I take it this TOIL payouts is a contractual agreement?
That's correct.
Thank you.
No further questions? Carry on, chief.
The next item under public safety building, that's for the exterior painting and ceiling of the outside of the building. Now that we have a new roof and some new concrete, and it's probably been 10 to 12 years since it's been painted, and it's starting to show its age and wear, and I think it's a case of protecting our infrastructure asset, so it's in need of paint and ceiling. And I've had quotes on that, and I was quite surprised at how reasonable it is for two coats of paint for the entire building.
Just in clarification, chief, because that's shared with police, we still end up having the same cost, don't we? Even though the budget would be shared with police.
They share ONM costs, operation and maintenance costs, but they don't share improvement costs of the building.
Darn.
Have you tried that? We didn't.
And the other thing, mayor, for the record, that's cost recovery, and I never seem to see that either. The next item, emergency program. Three years ago, before Squamult established an emergency program of their own, there was $10,000 that was paid to the city of Victoria. So at the onset of that program, the director of the ESS program receives a stipend, which is half of that amount, and certainly the, our emergency program has made great strides. But at the recommendation of our emergency program manager, and with the growth of the programs, they are suggesting that a small stipend be paid to the amateur radio director and deputy director, the amateur, a small amount of $360 for volunteer appreciation night, and finally, the ESS deputy director amount of $1,500. And if you work that out at an hourly rate, it probably would be less than what a counselor makes per hour.
Five cents an hour.
I'm not sure that's possible. Our already rate sucks.
And any questions?
Any questions on that? Thank you. Worth every penny.
Thank you. I don't know who speaks to the police, but it looks like it's...
I'll speak to that. So the $389,000 is the amount that we talked about earlier that's been adjusted for the two sworn officers that we don't pay for and disagreement in the assessed value for the funding formula.
Thank you. Now, okay, let's start with Counsel Braden.
Okay. Say we lose our battle and we have to pay the fullback, those extra officers and the change in the percentage that they keep swearing that supposed to be 15, 16% rather than the lower percent that we were, we agreed on in the beginning. Say we lose the battle and we have to pay all that, so therefore, we did not budget for that, where would that money come from at the end of the day?
The sworn officers, it's already been a decision by the sister general, that won't, that gone through the appeal process. They won't come back on us for that. I actually, we have a letter unfiled that they, they put us on notice that they will sue us for the other portion, and we'll talk about that later.
Counsel Morrison.
Back to my earlier points on how contingency funds can be our best friend, and this is probably a primary example of where I, is that my wrong on that?
No, we, this is a segment we should not discuss at this meeting.
Okay. Sure.
No, that's okay.
Staff.
But to answer, the general contingency fund is not where we pay for these funds from, but we can have that discussion later, where we're going to pay for those funds.
In terms of having that discussion, is, is there an in-camera session set aside for that at some point, or, because that's what I believe we need to do? Or should, or is this the time to address that and call in, and now go in-camera?
You can go in-camera tonight, you can go in-camera at the end of the discussions tomorrow, or at the beginning of the discussions. We didn't schedule an in-camera meeting, but all it takes is they can have a vote of counsel to do that. And generally, when we're having these budget meetings, if we feel the need to go in-camera, we just ask counsel to vote on that, and then we can do it at noon. So you can do it at the end of tonight, you can do it at the beginning of tomorrow, or at the end of tomorrow, it's totally up to counsel. We can flag that for, for discussion.
Okay, I would like that flagged so that we have that discussion at the end of the night, and we won't inconvenience the public at this point. There are certainly discussions that I'd like to have more around the police budget. The request for increased costs around Canada Day, although I recognize and understand the need, the difficulty always is, is that the celebrations are determined and decided by Victoria. This is their sesquicentennial, and I don't know that we have looked into what extra will that cost and add to our, the policing cost. And is it fair in the region that this Squamult shares in the cost and not necessarily the benefit, albeit regionally, we all share in the benefit of having a celebration on Canada Day? That means everybody. So therein lies the difficulty and the discussion, and I certainly would look to the rest of counsel for some discussion around that. I will let you know that there was, in last year's budget, actually ended up with an amount, an extra amount in the police budget. Dave, I believe you were there for that discussion?
Yes, chief.
Sorry, Counselor Hodgins. You look just friendly, and I'm referring to you as Dave, and that money went into a long-needed fund, but that being said, it was a substantial amount of money that went into that fund that could have, you know, reduced our overall costs last year had we had that sent, so I think there's room to wiggle. Any further discussion on that? So we will highlight that, and I know that there's a section on that, is there?
Yes, and I just wanted to clarify that the reason that we have to go in-camera, because there was pending litigation on that issue, so we should discuss it in camera.
Thank you.
Perhaps we should implement robo-call and have all the people from downtown be funneled to San.
Are we moving on to transportation? Thank you.
Hey, I guess I could leave it up to counsel if you would like a little story behind each one, or just wants a piece of interest.
I like little stories.
Okay, you want a story. The standby pay for call-out, public works in a 24/7, 365-day operation. Being the case, we have a follow-up person, and under the new collective agreement, those rates have increased, so that's reflected in this budget. The traffic counts, the last traffic count we carried out in Squamult was in 2007. It has been a victim of budget cuts in the last couple of years. I'm bringing it back again. The reason, we look at 28 locations within the municipality on our major and our collective roads, and this would give us an indication of what the traffic use that we would see on those roads. The road condition evaluation, this is a program I'm looking to institute. It's basically, at this point, on a five-year cycle, and what would happen is we would go and contract out and hope... And what would happen is we would go and contract out and hopefully, there's been some talk in the region as well as other municipalities doing this at the same time. But through the use of specialized equipment, we would get a snapshot of what our road conditions are like. So on a scale of 1 to 10, 10 being best, 1 being the worst, we would get a range of what our roads look like. This would allow us to kind of plan which roads should get some preventive maintenance as to opposed to ones that are down at one or two that are probably at the rebuild stage. The library for engineering reports. Currently, our reports are scattered throughout cubicles and offices. The idea is to centralize it so we have that history. So as we're seeing through changes in staff, it was sitting in someone's office and they didn't know about it. Two years later, we find this report that we weren't sure had happened or not, but does contain valuable information. So that would centralize all those engineering reports and history. Storage for plans, believe it or not, there is a lot of development within Esquimalt. Each one of those has an ASBIL plan signed off by an engineer. We take an electronic copy, but we also take a paper copy with the engineer's seal on it as well, and that is our backup copy if we have problems with the electronic one. The traffic study for bike lanes on Lamson is a similar exercise to what was carried out last year on Admirals. It would look at the right-of-way we have and determine on a preliminary stage whether or not we could incorporate bike lanes into that right-of-way and what would be the impacts and give us a rough cost estimate for doing that. That would also give us another north-south corridor that would have a bike lane connecting the E and N plus Esquimalt Road plus Craig Flare. The road study for Lisle Street, again, this is again looking at the right-of-way. If you look at Lisle Street, there is the remnants of an old bike lane on the sidewalk, which some people interpret as a parking space. This would be, again, to look at that right-of-way, could we incorporate bike lanes? What would it do to parking? What would it do to pedestrian traffic? So we would come with a preliminary cross-section and a cost to how that would relate.
Thank you. Questions, council? Council Bray and then Council...
Council Morrison. Two comments and a question. Going to shared services, we know the military just did basically a traffic study of the area. How friendly would they be, do you think, to sharing some of that? I mean, they were at some of the key intersections of our community. How much do you think they're willing to share?
They would probably be willing to share quite a bit. The caution with that is they were not looking at what our needs are, they are looking at their needs. So they would probably have just looked at Admirals, Esquimalt Road, just how they enter and exit out of the base.
Well, they went all the way out. They were out at Telecombe and Gorge and various...
You might be thinking of the CRD did a major transportation one as well. We would gather that information as well. But the caution there again is with the CRD looking at it, they were looking only at major transportation corridors. So places like Lisle, some on Lamson and Head were not captured in their study, but we would ask for that information when we're carrying out ours.
Okay, that's good to know. And glad to see that the Lisle Street's in there. I know in just the three years, I guess this is what, the fourth budget, this has been on almost every year. I think it's time has come. I know we procrastinated for a variety of reasons, but I'm not sure we can dawdle on looking at this road too much longer. My one fear with taking out, and if it's okay, I wouldn't mind flagging the road condition evaluation of every five years to come back to it when we're looking at where we can mix and mingle, just because that's a major part of our infrastructure and evaluating where our roads are at, to me, is really important. So I wouldn't mind flagging that to come back to in the midst of what can we take out and what can we leave in.
Thank you. Council Morrison.
Just to expand on that, just to clarify, with the road condition evaluation every five years, is that just structure of the road or does that also include aesthetics, lighting, pedestrian safety, like sort of the above-the-ground aspects or the more social aspects of the road conditions as opposed to the engineering structure?
No.
It's just structure?
No, the road condition survey would look at the road structure itself. We're starting to implement asset management plans that will look at lighting, our sidewalks and such. So while that would be something we are looking at, it would not be part of the road conditions study. That's strictly the road structure itself, the asphalt, the gravel, the stuff you drive on.
So for that $50,000, we just get just the road?
Just the road.
Okay. And also, go back to the Lisle Street. Just to clarify, so that would be a study as to whether we could have bike lanes as opposed to people parking where they're... Have the bike lane restored instead of having people parking on the bike lanes? Is that correct?
That would be part of it. There's been some concern to what that road, that right-of-way cross-section looks like. The study would try to come up with a finite appearance to what that would look like, and again, would tell us, is there enough right-of-way there to incorporate bike lanes plus on-street parking, plus a sidewalk? It might come back and say, no, you can't have a bike lane and still maintain, but that's what the study will hopefully tell us.
And just to refresh my memory, I think this predates both of us. When was the decision made to put the biking lanes on Esquimalt Road, like one block basically north of Lisle Street, the extended biking lanes that go along Esquimalt Road? How long have they been?
I really can't give you an answer. I think when Esquimalt Road was upgraded, it was always part of the plan to add biking lanes onto it, but I can't say with any degree of certainty when the decision was made to do that. That predates myself.
And I'm guessing at that time, the vision there was that bikes would use Esquimalt Road along with cars, the main, the road car. And as a result, bikes were not so encouraged to use Lisle Street. That's why we're in the state, we're in, is that?
I cannot answer that.
Councilor Hunt will be was there.
Okay, and so I'll just flag that item.
And so I'll ask her if she wants to respond.
In answer to Councilor Morrison's question, I believe it happened just before I came on council the first time, so that would be in the late 90s. So between 96 and 99, it happened at that point. My guess is around 97. So it's been around for that long.
All right, so just to be clear, I'll flag that Lisle Street study.
Councilor Shinmai.
Thank you, Your Worship. Here you, the staff. On the five-year, excuse me, on the five-year road condition report, when was the last time that was done?
I believe the last one we did, we did one in 1995, and the last one I know of is in 2006.
Right, and my second question is, I'm trying to understand this. So a road condition report says, okay, this is the shape of the asphalt, this is the shape of the gravel underneath, this is the shape of, you know, if roads dipping and, you know, need some underground work done. But when we start looking at things like traffic study for bike lanes and the Lisle Street, I'm not getting into the nitty-gritty of the necessity of it. My question is, should the road study be done first before you start looking at things like whether we're going to expand and put in a bike lane or we're going to do whatever? Would it be more cost-effective for us to have a better understanding of what our roadbed network is like, what the stuff underneath the asphalt is like, before we start digging it up, suddenly have surprises, and then suddenly a bike lane project costs twice as much as maybe it should have? So I'm wondering, in terms of setting a priority, maybe we need to flag this, that we can get some more information as to which is a priority. Unless, of course, you can answer that right now.
I can give you a general idea.
Fair enough.
You have to remember, most bike lanes will fit within the right-of-way and the road structure that's already there. We try, the attempt probably would not be to try to expand the asphalt surface, it would be the asphalt surface we have now, is it sufficient to support bike lanes? So really, putting a bike lane, it's just painting line down the road, the asphalt structure wouldn't change other than the loading that goes on top of it. The purpose for the road evaluation study is to determine which roads you can do preventive maintenance, whether it be cracked sealing, micro paving or such. If you do a treatment at an early point in its life or at the appropriate point in its life, you would get 10 or 15 more years, depending on what the treatment is, before you start going to a point where the road deteriorates and you go into a rebuilt situation. Once a road has reached a certain point, and I'll use an example of Fairview in the industrial area, if you go down that section of road where it comes into Devonshire, the entire road surface is cracked, water's going into the base, the base is probably non-existent for doing the structural purpose it was there for. To go and now say, let's overlay that road, would probably be a fair waste of money because there is no structure underneath it. Within five years, you would probably see that new asphalt cracking up. So the study will help identify those roads and help us set priorities where we go and say, maybe on a road like Lamson, all it needs is another 25 millimeters on it as a wearing surface, and that will get us another 10 years or 20 years out of it. And then we know roads like Fairview that we'll have to budget for the rebuild of it. So what we're trying to do is stave off getting into that rebuild stage as much as possible. There's a famous curve in all engineering texts where at one point, if you do something, it goes up almost to the same life expectancy as new and you gain that amount. And if you hit that point every time, you should never get into a point where you're having to rebuild a road or rebuild that structure. And that's what we're going to try to achieve with our asset management plans, and this is a tool in which to come to that realization where that point is.
Thank you, Your Worship. That's why I was sort of, because I noticed it was on the acts list, and I think that's why I said I'd flag it, because it's $50,000 for that study, $30,000 for the bike lane study. Maybe there's something we can do, you know, maybe, again, a little more discussion on the priority. But again, you know, I'm kind of leaning that I kind of like to know what road shape are in before I worry about whether we extend our bike system. That's my concern.
Thank you. Further?
I guess I would have to do that. Flag Lamson and then flag the traffic, or, excuse me, the traffic evaluation.
Okay, so just...
So that they can be discussed at the same time, Your Worship.
Thank you. So just to be clear, we've got road condition flag, traffic study for bike lanes on Lamson flag, and somebody flagged road study for Lisle Street, I think. Everybody's okay with that? Are there further questions?
I have a couple of questions and comments, and it relates to the same three items. I see the road condition evaluation as a proactive move to dealing with infrastructure before it gets to crisis stage, which costs far more than it, as you eloquently explained. If we can hit it at that right point in the curve, we can buy a lot more time and use of it for lower cost. The traffic study for bike lanes on Lamson, I'm absolutely committed to improving our cycling network, but when I talk to cyclists and they talk about what are barriers to cycling, clearly Lamson Street is a significant hill. And I'm wondering whether realistically, as much as it's a great east-west route, whether that is being realistic with our dollars of $30,000. How many bikes actually use it? Have we done a bike count on that road? Have we done any measurement that suggests that that is a route that we should be looking at? And so I agree with the flagging for that reason. I don't know what the other route is, because I know that Admirals has the same questions and concerns, but I think we have to be realistic with bike lanes, even though we want to get the east-west, how many cyclists actually use that hill? And I can think of a better place for $30,000 right now without that information in front of me. The road study for Lisle Street, we did one a few years ago, 2005, 2006, and it was, it studied bicycle lanes, the width of the road. It really was, as I remember, and that could, you know, could very well be quite foggy, but we didn't really look at that road. And at the end of the day, we ended up putting it on shelf. And I don't think it's so dated that it couldn't be pulled off the shelf to be at least reviewed. We ended up with a number of very contentious issues, as you can imagine, parking being one of them. We were going to remove the bicycle lane, as I remember, and at the end of the day, it became part of the discussion around the broader picture of village project and all of the municipal lands. And I guess what I'm trying to say is that when we deferred that because of those contentious issues potentially, as well as the idea of still looking at with the development or changes that we might incur around our bigger picture, longer-term village project in terms of the parking lots of RG grounding and those sorts of things, is it of value to take a look at this old study first and also then also at some point sort of review it within the greater context of the initial visioning of our municipal lands and how it ties in? So I again agree with the flagging because of those reasons.
Councilor Hunt.
Thank you, Chair. I'd also agree with that. In addition to the issues on Lisle Street, there was the issues that we no longer have of heavy oil trucks going down the street. So I think that it bears looking at, and we may want to update it. One of the things around traffic studies is that things do change, and so sometimes we do need to relook at things in a new context. So I would be in favor of relooking at that. And certainly, I know that there are some residents who are, would be in favor of that.
Thank you. And I guess one final point that just came to my mind was, and still is, the unfinished business of the sewage treatment plant and use of our roads and how mitigation may, at the end of the day, be a part of that process. And I know that that was part of why we deferred some of these discussions. Thank you. Councilor Hunt?
Thank you. And so I firmly believe that it would be not in our best interest to defer the road condition evaluation. I think that if we are going to look at mitigation and compensation for the use of our roads because of heavy cement trucks or, I don't want to say sewage, but heavy cement trucks anyways, we need to have a baseline with to measure it with. And so it would be important for us to have that knowledge, because if we don't have it, then I don't know that we can actually ask for mitigation and compensation. For me, I think it's important and it should not. Thank you.
Thank you. So we do have them flagged or further discussion?
Okay, our next heading is roadway structures with two items underneath it. The first one is basically our construction materials. It does say asphalt, but it includes a wide range of construction materials, gravel, sand, everything that goes into building a road. In 2010, that budget was reduced down to a bare minimum. In 2010, that budget was reduced down to a bare minimum. Basically, it was fixing potholes and not much more than that. In the 2011 budget, council increased it by half, which was $17,000. And we would look at increasing it again back up to the 2009 levels with another $17,000. The next one is as we put more lines on our roads, so the bike lanes on Craig Flower and on Esquimalt Road. And essentially because of the islands and such, you start to double your center lines. When we go to paint our road markings, we're increasing our total kilometers. And so that's reflected in that $4,000 cost. The sidewalks, the concrete is again for the construction materials. It was in a similar situation as the asphalt materials, halved in or taken down to a bare minimum in 2010. And we're trying to get it back up to 2009 levels. The traffic lights and signs, the sign inventory, we do carry a certain number of signs within our inventory, the more common ones. These ones would be the less common ones. So what happens now when a traffic order is issued or we need a new sign that is not one of our common ones, we then have to order it and that can take two to five weeks depending on what the sign is and where we can get it from in order to get it back onto the street. So by the 5,000, we would increase that inventory and that would increase our response time. The janitorial service, that was a contract that was left last year and on a three-year term. And obviously, the cost went up and that's reflective in the new core budget. And I think I'll stop there before I go into environmental.
Thank you. Councilor Hahnabe.
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Miller. So regarding the janitorial contract, it's a three-year term. So does this amount of, does the amount of money go up each year within that term or is that, will that be the same value for the next three years?
There will be some variation in it. It won't be a significant variation. The contract is written that the contractor is to meet QP wages for an equivalent position. We do negotiate with them to what it is, to what the increase is going to be. And we try to match that due to that clause in each collective agreement.
Thank you. Like, Councilor Shinba.
Go.
Thank you, your worship. A lot of sidewalks. So if I understand what you've explained to me, and I'm off, that's fair, let me know. The $6,500 that you're asking is an increase on the 6,500 that's already there? So it actually brings it up to 13K?
No, actually, I don't have the number in the top of my head, but I believe it's in, the total budget then would be $60,000.
Thank you.
Further questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, environmental services. Council Hahnabe had asked how our sewers were doing. I guess I maybe didn't answer that question fully because I do have a request for an additional $7,000. What we have been noticing in our gravity sewers, which are sanitary sewers, increased number of breaks in a number of locations where they probably weren't relined. This is to deal with those breaks that we're seeing in each street. With luck, I probably won't need it. But having said that, I'm sure I'll have a break tomorrow that is going to be rather costly. The H-frame, we have 11 lift stations within the township. In order to access those, those are defined as confined space. This piece, this apparatus would allow us to access any one of those. It would be mobile so we could go from point to point and do it. It would also be usable because manholes are also defined as confined space, active ones. So we would also be able to use this as a confined space egress system as well for our manholes.
Thank you. Councilor Hahnabe.
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Miller. So is the request for the H-frame then, is that also recommended by WCB?
It is a safety concern. At this point, we cannot enter our lift stations to do maintenance if necessary. Basically, at this point, there's a number of ways you can do it. But at this point, what happens is we take our crane truck down and hook our technician or public works individual onto the end of the crane and we lower him into the such. It's rather an expensive use for a crane truck that can be used in other applications. This, like I said, would allow us to go to all of our lift stations. Plus, when we do have a problem at a manhole, we would have a proper system in order to allow our people to safely enter and exit a confined space.
Thank you. It's pretty clear to me. Councilor McTone.
Thank you. Through Mr. Miller. Gravity sewer construction, I know you've been working on re-lining for a number of years. How far are we along? We got two-thirds done? Have we got half of it done?
We have approximately half of it done and that's as far as we've gone. That was the sewer grant money that I believe was first allocated in 2000. At that time, a survey or they camered the entire system, rated it from one to five, the ones, twos, and threes. I believe all the ones and twos, which is the structural condition of the pipe, were re-lined and a portion of the threes, but I can't tell you how much. And that either got us both approximately 45% of our system or just under 50%. The remainder of the system, again, we haven't camered it since, so we really don't know what shape it's in at this time.
Thank you.
Through to that, is the remainder of the system our portion of the system or is it from our pipe to the, to the house? I'm probably mixing and matching I and I, but I'm-
The main lines are ours as well as the services that come off the main lines to the property line are ours. Once you cross the property line to the house, they are the responsibility of the homeowner.
Okay, thank you. Just for council's information, this becomes very important in terms of inflow and infiltration, which is what I and I is. And I'm not going to answer all the questions around that, other than the understanding is that broken pipes, et cetera, or poor infrastructure allows more flow. And based on costs in the future for sewage treatment, they will be based on flow is what we're understanding. More flow means more cost. So in the past, council has really encouraged and tried to emphasize the need to ensure that our infrastructure is at the best possible state. And so councils previously have done, put monies aside and borrowed monies to help the greater pipes, by the way, lining. But there's still that next section and our flows continue to be third highest or second highest in the region. And that's because we're old. So I just wanted to add that little anecdote.
Thank you.
And the last one on the sheet, and the last one for me, is the recycling charge for the yard and garden drop-off depot. Again, that was a contract that was released last year and awarded. Again, this is the change in the cost that we have seen.
Councilor McTone.
Through, have you looked at, you're talking about the canteen room?
Yes.
One? Have you looked at looking after that ourselves instead of contracting it out? Is it viable?
Prior to this contract, we did not really have any information with respect to how much tonnage is being used, who uses it, how many commercial people are using it. In this contract, we included that requirement to get that information so we could make a decision to whether or not that's something that should come in-house. The one caution that goes along with it is we can operate the site, we will probably still have to contract with someone to dispose of it because obviously we don't have the land area. But tied into that as well would be what direction the CRD is going with household organics and with yard waste as well. Sometimes yard waste is used to cut the household organics when they're making compost and such. So the awarding of it to a private contractor for the, I believe it was a five-year term or three, I can't remember off the bat, kind of coincides when a lot of things are probably going to come to fruition with respect to Heartland and such. So with the information we're gathering at this time, we can then make an informed decision as to whether or not it would be to our advantage to bring that in-house or not.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Councilor Shinba.
Following along the same line. So when I understand this program, very simply put, is that basically this is the place where we collect organic waste that sits there and then disposed of? Correct me if I'm wrong.
The yard and garden waste drop-off site or program only deals with yard and garden waste. It does not deal with household organics. So this is the grass, the leaves, trees up until three inches, three feet long. And that is a program, users who can use that site are View Royal and Esquimalt residents. We get cost recovery from View Royal for them participating in that.
I just had one of those mental moments there and now understand the difference. But I guess, so basically, we're funding this, but we really, other than some of the costs recovery you said you get, we get from View Royal. So we're really, this is not a revenue generator, this is an expense.
Yes.
So we don't generate any revenue, selling this stuff off, it just piles up there. We pay money to have it piled up there and then-
My understanding was, and again, this predates myself, at some point in the history of Esquimalt, the residents had come forward saying we need to have something to do with our yard and garden waste. The council of the day at the time said, "No problem. Are you willing to pay for it in your taxes?" The answer was yes, and this program was set up.
That answered my question. Thank you very much.
Do I see a flag?
I think so.
Any further discussion or questions? And so I want to ask that in all seriousness, would you like to flag this item for further discussion?
I think so, your worship, because although I'm pretty sure it probably does accomplish something, but I'm just concerned that, and from previous experience, that when municipalities start getting into this, usually there's some sort of cost recovery that we could work on it. I might be short by ignorance on the process. But I don't know, I just thought that might be something we should be talking about. It is still an expense to municipality.
I'm going to go to Council Brim, she may be adding something from Suits CRD.
Well, actually, no, but I'm going to add that through you to staff as a contract, we're obligated to do this for the next five years anyways. We can't really take it out or flag, we can flag it, but we can't do anything about it as we say, legal.
Given, thank you. Given that, I would be willing to say that if we don't flag it, that I think this is maybe something we should talk about later. And I would be prepared to take the flagging off of it, providing that at some point council addresses this.
I think that-
Because we do have time to contract this by.
Yes. And the region is in a state of flux as to what to do with kitchen scraps. And that's why I kind of nodded at you when you said our tree's not organic, because the organics are considered the kitchen scraps right now. And so what, you know, what are municipalities doing? Every municipality is doing something differently right now. CRD was hoping to coordinate it. That in fact seems to be falling apart, but we have not yet made decisions at CRD. And I'm the chair of the environmental committee, and so I can certainly ask CRD staff to come and I can provide you with some background information that might help us as we go forward on this issue.
Very def, your worship, and I, this aside, I have read some of it. But again, I'm looking at this strictly from a financial viewpoint.
Understand. Yeah. Councilor Hodgins.
Through the Chair then, in terms of, I understand, the contract part of this, but there is also an opportunity for a discussion around user fees. So in the flag part, we can have that conversation. I'm not suggesting I support an additional user fee in this particular area, but it's going to be worth a conversation.
With respect to charging a fee to it, it would depend on what context you're speaking of and where we could fit it into the contract and how we collect it, I guess. When you look at it right now, there is, I guess technically, a user fee on the residents already in the fact that it's part of their taxation and therefore they're free to use it. With respect to commercial haulers, we might be able to negotiate that with the current operator. But again, part of our problem has been, and we evaluated, looked at it when we were going out for a contract at this time, is we don't know how much is that site being used. If you remember in the period reports, there's a new item that comes in that tells you the number of users from View Royal and Esquimalt, the tonnage hauled off and tonnage that we think has come from commercial. And that is the information we need in order to determine whether or not this is something to take on. Again, it won't be a cost-neutral enterprise because we don't have the lab mass or the equipment in order to do our own compost. And unfortunately for us as well, the volumes we do generate probably would not be significant where someone would want to buy off of us, let's put it that way. But again, that's where we need this information. So this would be probably a discussion that'd be more appropriate as we're going in to the last year of the contract to make the decision whether or not this is something we want to continue on with. Again, as your worship has said, the CRD as a whole is in a flux as to what is going to go on. There are a number of possibilities that, depending on which way it goes, this material is something that could be used to generate methane. If a waste energy plant is in the future at Heartland or someplace else, this would be another energy stream that could be used to assist in the operation of that plant as well as reducing our carbon footprint. Again, we're such at the early stages, it's hard to, I guess, give you an answer at this point. My recommendation at this point would be give us a year or so to see where this contract is going and what type of tonnages are going and where is the CRD as a whole going. I think at that time, I would be better suited to give you an answer as to whether this is a profitable venture for us to venture into.
Council Brim.
Just touching on what Mr. Miller said, this is such a new contract. I think we only came, it only changed over in September or October?
Fall of last year.
Yes, we haven't even had any year yet to get a full year's numbers worth of information. So I think definitely at least waiting a year before we see what exactly we've got before we make any further decision. And I just want to make sure, you know, we can't, it's hard to take it out of the budget because of the whole pilt issue as well. We don't, you know, right now, you know, some of it, you know, is covered by pilt. We take it out, make sure it's not been needed by the military and then 4,900%. To take it out, we need to make sure it's not been needed by the military, and then we're 100%.
I just want to add that there's a number of exciting options as we go forward. And I thank Council Hodgins for speaking to them. Waste-to-energy is huge, and there seem to be all sizes of abilities out there. Although it has to be viable, and so that's my understanding from Mr. Miller, is that are we viable? Along with that though, since we partner with View Royal, is there an opportunity to partner with View Royal when it comes to kitchen scraps? We won't know that until we know what CRD is doing. Along with that idea, certainly Dockside doesn't have the volume they need. Is there an opportunity there? So there are a number of things that as we go down this route, and CRD tends to give better direction as to where they're headed, we have opportunities that could present themselves as a better use of our funds and perhaps even some revenue generation. I'm always hopeful.
Thank you. Is there anything further under environmental developmental services?
So we have Development Services is next, and there's just three items, so I'll speak to each of those. The request for staff for educational assistance is a senior planner who's entered into an education program for which he signed a contract with the municipality. We share costs of that, of him attending that education forum. And he has agreed that if he leaves within a certain length of time, he will pay that back. So that's to do with that agreement. I can't speak a lot to the Culture Advisory Committee request for $750. I don't know, someone else maybe?
If there are any questions, I can skip that.
Okay. And then the community tourism, reprint of our walking tour brochures, which we all know are very popular, and we need to more of them, so I think that's self-explanatory. So as Bill said, if you have any questions on that, Culture Advisory Committee can speak.
Questions, council? I noticed the ferry is out of our brochures. We need to reprint more. The next section is Sentinel Celebration, that wasn't really real, so I don't think we need to go through that. And that's just the cost with the offsetting revenue that are in the budget. Thank you. What I'd like to do is make a five-minute thesis.